Please call the roll.
Bird.
Here.
Henson.
Here.
Kaho Kelli. Mormon.
Here.
Elsa Beck.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Instrom.
Here.
All right, item two, approval of agenda.
May you, your honor.
No changes tonight.
Hope to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes. All right, item three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A public hearing for the consideration of the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget amendments. Are there any written comments?
Yes, sir.
Any public comments? Hearing none, this uh hearing is now closed. Uh. Three A one, thirty two oh one resolution adopting fiscal year 2024 budget amendments. A motion to approve that.
So move second.
Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
All right, three B, public hearing for a request of a zoning change of parcels of property generally described as parcel number zero eight eight four two six three three one four eight two oh two five in the twelve hundred block of South Marshall Street northeast of the intersection of South Marshall Street and Crestwood Drive from C one special commercial district to C three limited commercial district. Are there any written comments?
Yes, sir.
Any public comments? Seeing none, this hearing is now closed. Three C, set a public hearing for June third, twenty twenty four at six P M for the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment facility roofs replacement project. I'll take a motion for that.
Remember.
Second.
Call the roll.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
All right, three D, approved fiscal year twenty twenty five human service grant recommendations. Elsa and Instrom.
Um unfortunately, I double booked myself on the day I wasn't able to be at the meeting. Um I gave my recommendations. We were able to fill um the majority of the grants. We did have to lower one of them, but all the other ones are are full, so I'll take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird. Henson.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
All right. Number four, public comment for items not on the agenda. So this will be the time for any items that aren't on the agenda further down if anyone has any comments. Bees go free. All right, Kelly first, I guess, and then yeah, if you could state your name just for the record.
I'm sharing the main street uh boom committee, and I just want to give you a quick little update. Uh we submit our application on this Friday, so this process is almost almost complete. Um we've done been putting this thing together this last couple of weeks, really putting in all the data. We have done so much better than we did last year. Um a lot of the things that they dinged us on, we've really been able to show. We said what they said, and we've gone above and beyond. Uh just one example, the number of investors that we have. Last time we had forty five, this time we have over ninety. So um I did bring pledge cards with me. For any of you that haven't pledged yet, it would be really great to say all our city council went and did Main Street business this time. All of our city council is bought in and their investors. Um anybody else in this room, anybody else who's listening, I have pledge cards. Um would love to take a few more. It doesn't matter how much, can be five dollars, be five thousand dollars. We just really need to have a lot of people who are invested and want Main Street to come to them. Um once we submit the application, I will give a copy to Bill, and so he'll be able to share with all of you if you want to read it. Right now it's seventy pages, so we've got a lot of a lot of data and information in ourselves. Uh if you have any questions about it or anything, happy to answer. Otherwise, I really appreciate all of the work and help you guys have done to make this happen.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Oh, Brian, go ahead.
Uh my name is Brian Limeridge, and I'm running for the Boone County Supervisor position, and I just wanted to put a face with a name. Uh I'm I live in Ogden, I've been there for over forty years. I taught school in Ogden for thirty nine years. Uh I've been on the city council in Ogden for thirty six years. Some might say too long, but uh it's been a real profitable deal, and I really appreciate the opportunity to come and put my my name and put a face uh so I think it'll be an interesting uh election. And uh do you have any questions that'll be at any other time? I've worked with several of you on different committees. Uh and I I I really appreciate the partnership that Boone County has, and I want to make sure that that gets expanded. So if you have any questions, please reach out to me. Thank you.
Very good, thank you very much. Any other comments? All right, seeing no more comments, uh item five, reports of standing committees. A policy administration and employee relations. Williamson.
No report tonight.
All right, thank you. B, public safety and transportation.
Yep, we have one thing on the agenda, and it's to discuss approve Story Street parking recommendations from Shore Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated for S E H. Um and I will turn that over to Bill.
Thank you, sir. Uh if you remember, um council previously directed uh Perry at S E H to do a parking study downtown on Story Street. In the packet is their report with their recommendation, which is alternate three. Uh Perry, uh do you have anything you want to add before we begin to discuss with elected officials?
Well, we just look at the four different options there. One, keeping mid-block crossings, and just taking one side diagonal parking. Um then the other option would be solid bounce parking. And the two other options were a bit of the big cross or finish on the crossings. And then again, having diagonal on one side versus the others. Or is the number of parking spaces that would be added. So with the current existing parking layout, we have about sixty six parking spaces. For two, the mid-block crossings in out northbound diagonal parking, that was seventy seven parking spaces. So if you were to bring it southbound, parking, some behind parking spaces, which brings it up thirteen. And also the three, which we recommend would be the mid-block crossings that adds twenty one parking spaces. And the same would be true if you took the mid-block crossing and have southbound diagonal parking. That also adds twenty parking spaces.
Why, um tell me why you would eliminate those mid-block? I'm just wondering because they kind of, it has a look for it, and it makes it a little more, what, pedestrian kind of friendly? But what's what's your rationale?
Our concern is the safety, especially if you are adding diagonal parking side because the site distance is pretty minimal before you're actually stepping into traffic. That's our main concern would be the safety side.
And that's more blocked with the the diagonal than the parallel.
Especially if you're to pick up with the top or something. You're not going to see anything until you get into traffic.
And the plus that adds more parking spaces, correct? If we did not.
Bump outs take probably two spaces.
Right.
Bump out, right?
So it adds another ten or eleven parking spaces.
And would this get rid of the left turn lanes like at eight? Is there any concern with that? I mean.
You have the same situation over one block over. It's not as well trapped or traveled as this one is.
Okay.
You're just going to have to wait longer.
I saw at eighth and story, sometimes you can get a a couple of times a day. I mean, it's Boone, I guess, but.
Yeah, the question's for Perry. I know you've probably already read this and.
Probably the altered was topic plan would be changed timing and phasing of the traffic light, I think.
Yeah.
Southwest, south, northbound, southbound. Uh to give a little more delay for directions. Southbound would start a little earlier, northbound would finish a little later and give them time to unload, it's probably.
Yes, that's a great idea. Because otherwise you just worry if somebody's the first person on the line is going to turn left and has to wait the entire light cycle.
That that's potentially solvable with timing of lights.
Okay.
Any other questions? So as part of the downtown project, which this is a part of, we're going to be discussing that later uh under the engineer's report for accepting the bids for that. If you want to, you can make a motion now to accept S E H's recommendations, or we can handle it under engineer's report, but either way, we're going to need the decision tonight if that's what the elected officials choose.
I'm for it.
I'll make that motion.
It's the only way we're going to add parking down.
I I I think with getting rid of the middle crosswalks, it just gives people a little more time to walk by storefronts and do a little more window shopping. I said, we're we're filling up downtown as it is. And I think why why not, why not make it to where they can window shop a little bit more and go to the.
Understand when we remove those bump outs, we have to take out all the trees, the big old mature trees which need to come out anyway, right?
I think they're going to cause a problem eventually anyway.
There's nine of them, correct, Mike?
Nine total.
Big ones?
But next to it.
Yes.
And then stump it, and that'll keep, that'll prevent the sidewalk from heating again.
And then it's going to make Waylon's job a lot easier moving snow in the winter time.
Those bump outs gone, add add parking and ease of maintenance, easier maintenance.
Sir, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a few, actually.
Could you state your name quick for the record?
Shallow. I guess eight fifteen Story Street. You did this survey of downtown, did we do all this parking? Who did you talk to? Did you talk to any of the businesses, property owners, or anything down there, or did you just look at the situation and make a decision?
Well, we had chops on story, we're in here talking about diagonal parking with us.
Some stories do not represent all the business owners downtown.
I understand that. I understand that, but the only way we can add parking downtown is to do something like this. There are no vacant lots to put parking lots in. That was their main concern is increasing the parking downtown.
If you want to increase the parking downtown, which you close the street to parking, quite a few occasions throughout the year, uh which makes it very difficult for the businesses down there to you don't enforce the no parking as it is unless somebody calls in. So that's a solution too, just enforce it. By doing diagonal parking on one side, you now force all the pickup trucks and trailers forward to the other side. So you're going to adjust the regular parking even worse. So you may think it's a win, but if you gotta live with it every day, look out your window, you can have to run your business around that. In my opinion, it's going to make it a lot rough for us. Now, I know Shaws and Story has a different opinion than mine, but that's fine.
I think we've got to remember that this season, it's just paint. Uh we can always change it if it doesn't work. Um but the majority of the business owners that we've we've talked to and that have been in here have really showed interest in wanting more parking downtown. And this is a good way to gain to gain twenty one spots, and that's a lot of customers that every store could use.
That's true, but I've been downtown for four years and nobody's ever come.
What do you recommend? Do you have a, I mean.
You just spend all this money on trees, now you're going to tear out a whole bunch more. Yes, they're mature, okay, yeah, they're getting old and they're going to die, but it's find the way it is. Besides, half your businesses aren't even open Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Let's speed. The other thing is, I know for us, the direct effect, the way you lay this all out, you're going to affect mail delivery for us. It's going to make it a lot more difficult for them to get in and out. Uh. We do anywhere from fifty to a hundred packages a day. That's the same as the customer coming into that store. So when you start cleaning this up, it does have a direct effect. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
So, well. Can I ask anybody else, have any comments?
Just with the parking stalls. Nine foot, nine foot, yes. And by UPS truck stops on the road, delivery will practice if to get it through.
It can't be that.
That's my question. What create a problem?
Well, from my experience, I can tell you that it's 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 there now anyway. I mean, we have the trucks come downtown to service the businesses and uh the UPS, the other ones, they stop in the road and make deliveries and things like that, so it's already occurring.
They're not pulling into a spot, right?
No, well, the spot aren't big enough for the big trucks that they drive, so.
We aim to design a parking on both sides of Main Street, and they just make it work.
Right.
It's all the business owners I've talked to would like to see more parking.
I have a question for the aims. How wide is the road from sidehouse to sidehouse?
Ever stand up?
Is it a lot wider than ours or about the same? I'm pretty sure those blocks are.
Ma'am, could you stand up and state your name just for the record?
Let's see.
I know it's a close up. I was just curious how much difference it's like you better realize Ames Main Street is not nearly as busy as Story Street. Because Story Street is the only street that goes from highway thirty all the way through town. The only street, you guys close it all the time, and now you guys want to make it um narrower for people, more dangerous for people. He even stated that people, it's going to be more dangerous to walk across the street because they can't see across the street. So why are you making it more dangerous? It doesn't need it. You said you need more parking? That's not, find another way. Use the bump out, take the bump outs away and just add more fellow parking. But adding the angle, he just, he stated earlier that was more dangerous for people walking across.
It's dangerous, the bump outs are dangerous.
No, 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 no. He said that having those bump outs with the diagonal spots is going to make it harder for people to cross the street.
And we're going to take the.
If you beat those bump outs out, where are they going to cross? Or is.
At the intersection.
Police, they're not going to walk to the corners to go across the street. They're going to park their car, look, go, that's what they do.
Can't cover every contingency.
And what I'm just stating opinion too, I drive through this town at least fifteen to twenty times a day. I see a lot of things. I'm a delivery driver throughout this town. I deliver anything from Walmart to DoorDash, at least twenty thirty orders a day. You'd be surprised on what I see downtown with the people driving parking in the bottleneck. You're going to create a word, not only eliminating a left turn lane. Plus, you got to change stuff.
We can adjust the bottleneck with the stoplights, with the stoplights. They said we can put, make it so they can turn, and one one lane turns first, then the other one go. Uh there's all kinds of technology there that we can put in to put to help with that.
Yes, I agree, I get that, that's the extra time. People don't have time anymore.
Leave your house five minutes earlier. Cool. Great time.
Here's, I guess, here's my comment. I'm I'm really not in support of taking out nine trees. I I I'm really working the other direction on trying to get more trees and getting a greener space downtown, so um that's that's, I guess, an issue for me with that alternative.
I did talk to Eric, we brought him up to the little trees that we planted a few weeks ago, and he said that they're about at the end of their.
The big ones?
The big ones are for how old they are. I know one of them, one by infancy, has to come down because it's like, so they get blowing into the building and break the windows and stuff. That was coming down anyway, so um I think Grayland and I talked about those trees, like making new cutouts in the concrete where they would go and putting smaller trees.
Some that's redoing.
So it wouldn't really lose those trees.
But replacing.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm sure it's just the large trees.
Right, right.
It's it's primarily the ones that are doing sanding.
That that helps, I need to hear all that. Good.
And I'm going to ask Waylon, I'm going to put him on the spot, but how much time do you think this would save on snow removal?
You know. I don't know if it's so much the time, but the the ease and the damage to the sidewalks. Uh we get new sidewalks, get new stuff up there. Maintain the size of that that thing. It's it's over forty five foot long, I think, and it's on just by the time we get it in against the curb, we've got to pull it back out. Uh and it with a load and full of snow on the plow, it bangs into the sidewalk, shifts the sidewalk. A straight run is going to be much easier. I don't know if it's a great time savings, probably some, but I don't know if you have to calculate.
Yeah.
The ease and the protection of the updated structure down there. We're trying to put the curb curb in on the ends and outs, stuff like that. Gets hit by the plow and bounce off of, that would be my answer.
Jamie.
Just speaking on the library's experience with these conditions to diagonal parking, I feel like people adjusted the speed at which they were. Actually saved those people expecting that they're anticipating that, so I I guess I I think it's safer for people because they expect to have somebody's. It's my experience.
Okay. Thank you.
Somebody made a motion, I believe.
I was, I was attempting. I will make that.
Could you state it? To, are you you talking about to accept alternate number three recommended by S E H?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second that.
Please call the roll.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Five C, utility committee, thank you.
We had a meeting this afternoon at four fifteen. Uh we talked about I N I project coming. Um it's going to be coming from uh, all right, the railroad tracks to First Street is about where it's going to be. And then there's some alternates over there over on the east side of uh the town that we're going to try to get to. Um and that'll be on next meeting, our next full council meeting.
Cool, thank you very much. Uh D, economic development, Elsa and Mike.
Um under number one, discussed request from veterans group for demolition assistance for eight oh seven six feet. Um Fred Griner came to to the Economic Development Committee meeting that we had just previous to this. We, uh this is a great project downtown. It's three veterans groups that are pooling their resources. Um the building up there, that's the old Krupp building downtown. Um they're going to take this down and put up a veterans uh center down there. It'll have a restaurant, um a lounge area, outdoor seating area, open to the public, have a meeting room. This is a great project that it removes this ice art which needs to come down. I've been in that building several times. It needs to go away. It's structurally unsound. It also sits on top of Honey Creek, which is a problem for us. Um when that building is gone, it will no longer uh sit on top of Honey Creek, which is the main stormwater line for Boone. So that this is a good project. They came to us, asked us to partner with them, the city to partner with them on the demolition. The demolition is approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and the city's contribution would be sixty thousand. The E D committee unanimously approved, bringing it to council for your approval. We think it's a great project. It will also aid Main Street removing another dilapidated building downtown and giving us another venue, so. And committee members, if you have anything to add, certainly do that, or Bill.
Very exciting. Thanks, great.
It it looks like it'd be a great improvement for that block, so I think it's a step in the right direction.
So we do have money available for this project to to partner with the veterans group um through stormwater and demolition accounts. Uh we have cleared legal on the project of the city participating. It would require a development agreement that our attorney would put together and then bring back for your review, and then obviously uh the veterans group for review as well. Um so you you won't officially be approving it until we get the development agreement. However, a motion tonight authorizing staff to move forward to develop the development agreement with our attorney to bring back to you for consideration and approval.
I make that motion that we move ahead.
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Um number two, thirty two oh two, resolution of supporting workforce housing tax incentive. I'm going to turn this over to uh city administrators here.
Thank you, sir. So this is a resolution, uh this address of this project is ten oh three Marshall Street. The E D committee has been up there and approved a B D F grant in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, up to thirty thousand dollars uh for this project. And that would be our match that it mentions in the resolution. Uh this allows uh the uh development group Echo Impact at ten oh three Mar Street to apply for this. This is for six housing units, correct, Sarah? Six housing units uh on the on the second floor of this building. Uh our B D F uh match of the up to thirty thousand, as you know, is for the outside of the building. This would be the inside of the building, uh and it would be their apply for a state grant. So uh I'll answer any questions you have, or Sarah is here from Ames E D C. Uh if there are no questions, then I would ask for approval of resolution three two zero two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Um number three, thirty two oh three, this is in regard to Daisy project. I'll turn this over to Bill as well.
Thank you. So this is a resolution approving basically with our attorney at Allers and Cooney to develop a development agreement at the appropriate time. This is standard for the attorneys to send to the city. Basically, you're authorizing them to do it, and you're going to pay the bill. That's what this resolves. So this is not a development agreement with Daisy at this time. That will become later, and Allers and Cooney will develop that agreement. This just authorizes them to do it, and you're all on the hook for the bill.
Develop a development agreement.
Uh basically, yes. So if I'll answer any questions you have, if you don't have any, then I would ask for a motion to approve resolution three two zero three.
Move to approve three two zero three.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Anything else?
Uh that's.
All right, thank you. I'm moving on, number six, department reports, building official debates.
Thank you, your honor.
Uh tonight's staff report is in conjunction with uh ordinance twenty three zero eight uh in regards to the uh request for a zoning change in the twelve hundred block, South Marshall. Uh as you know, Hunzucker Companies has came to the city uh with a proposed development. Um just for reference, we're talking about the farm field across from McDonald's. Um it's one single parcel. Um they're looking to uh do a development which has shown the conceptual drawing up on the screens. Um this development is going to have a um uh combined um commercial and residential aspect to it. So what they're looking at at uh building is thirteen townhomes um and two twelve plexes along with two, pardon. Uh two twelve plexes, the commercial buildings will be a mixed use of uh residential and commercial properties.
So just if I could, just the housing units, number forty six total between the apartment buildings and the townhomes.
Correct.
Forty six housing, forty six housing units.
Six housing. So obviously, uh Hunzucker was aware that we have done a housing study here in town, and they wanted to bring both uh residential and commercial aspects to this project. Um it's currently zone C one. C one does not allow for any residential housing in it, so that's henceforth the. So that's henceforth the proposed change to the C three. C three and C one are very similar in nature in the commercial aspect on what they allow. The C three then allows for the residential aspect to be still. Um. This project went through planning and zoning on the thirteenth. Uh, they reviewed it and they did, uh, recommend moving forward unanimously to council. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the project.
So you'll notice in the agenda that there is a first reading for an ordinance. Um. To start the, the rezoning process, uh, if you choose, you could make a motion to approve the findings and the decision of the. Committee to allow this and then you'll actually vote on the ordinance, uh, when we get to the ordinance part.
Doctor, could you please state your name?
I'm Sandy Sol, I live at Regency. Are the, the units up on twenty-second Street, are you full? Are they filled? Means we're inviting someone else into town with this type of.
Sure, I can answer that if, yes, so that, the, the project up at twenty-second Lynn is a low to moderate income. Uh, for our low to moderate income folks, uh, where your, uh. Your income has to meet a certain level in order to stay there. I will tell you, they have a waiting list up there. And they have, I think, already moved some in and they're expecting, uh, they will be full when they open. As well, so that's a project, ma'am, that's a forty housing unit for families. There's also a thirty housing unit for seniors that meet those income levels as well. So this is a different project. The project that we're discussing here tonight is a market rate. Uh, project that, uh. Will young couples, seniors as well. I assume there'll be some seniors in the townhomes out there renting those from them, but it's a market rate project. This.
Will they purchase, like townhomes and stuff, or are they gonna be rentals?
The developers intend at this time is that they will be rentals. That does not mean that five years down the road, they couldn't sell them. They own the property. They certainly have that right, but their intent is rentals. Uh, and this kind of helps me, we had a housing, uh, assessment done. A few months back and this is another project that meets that housing assessment that we received for the need for housing. Uh, they, the developer feels very comfortable about this project and are confident that they will fill those units.
You know, what prices these units?
At, no, at this time, I, I do not know. But I can tell you, the hot, the, the, uh. The townhomes from what I've got from the developer will be higher end. So I would expect a rent, this is just me ballparking here. Uh, anywhere from sixteen or seventeen to nineteen hundred and that's just a ballpark from me.
So for us, we're looking at, you know, we bought in, we own these.
Sure.
This is our agency and we don't wanna see something like twenty-second Street come in that's lower than stuff.
It's a market rate, it's a market rate, uh, project. Market rate rents.
How, how many floors will that be?
The twelveplexes? Um, right now, they're unsure between two and three. Again, the concept is conceptual at this point. We haven't got to a site plan phase or got construction, uh, projects. They're believing probably two at this point.
Think, any other questions or anything?
Oh, so, okay, so council could make the motion if they choose to approve the, the, the recommendation of the P and Z committee for this project.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Please call the roll.
Helsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, B, clerk finance officer, Andrea.
Uh, in the consent agenda, um, there is a resolution for the depositories. We did this a few months ago. Um, with the, uh, RFPs coming back with People's Bank, um, being the new bank as of July first. We need to change that depository to allow for up to thirty thousand dollars to be, um, put into people. Um, then in addition, um, uh, People's Bank would like a resolution to state who would be signers. Um, currently, it's just listed as finance officer, um, and deputy city clerk. The problem with that is if one of those are gone and we need to do a manual check, uh, we, we need another signer. Cause those are required to have two signers. So this depository lists the finance officer, the city clerk and the deputy city clerk as being signers on the new accounts. And that's in the consent agenda, so we don't need about.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Uh, city attorney, Jim?
No report, Your Honor.
All right, library, Jamie? All right, parks director and superintendent, Mike?
Uh, I just wanna let you know that, um. Milwaukee Park Playground is in, it's still fenced off because we were short, uh, engineered wood fiber, which requires, uh, fall protection. And, uh, we're also letting it dry out a while. Have about ten inches of water in there, the other area. So we've pumped it out, put in the wood fiber. But, uh, when it dries out, we'll get some landscaping stuff done, so. Uh, the commission, uh, opened on a lane structure, an obstacle course, or frankly, for the fifty thousand dollar matching funds. And, uh, a row of swing sets up there. And, um, we're guessing that once, once we get it ordered, that should be completed by September, maybe till late September. Um, also, um, the commission. They're talking about, uh, maybe having a work session some evening or something, just to talk about future plans. I think if, uh, one of the council members would like to join, they wouldn't be opposed to that at all. So that was it.
Very good, thank you. Uh, engineer, Bill?
Thank you. I'm gonna turn this over to Perry shortly, but just for resolution thirty-two oh four, this is authorizing a payment. Of one sixteen, five seventy-eight, eighty-nine to Manass for the Eighth Street project. I believe Waylon's happy with it as well as Perry from S E H. Uh. Motion to approve that payment.
Salute. Second. Please call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Helsa Beck?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm gonna turn over number two to Perry. This is about the downtown project, the contract, the bids that were taken. And the S E H is Perry's recommendation on which bid to accept. So it's all yours, Perry.
So, uh, best we can see five bids. Some progress. And add state kind of things. We also just got a street project, most of all bigger. And this is based on the base bid amount. Eight, it's six hundred and sixty-three thousand. Recommend awards with two Manass based on that. They said, all the bids came in, uh, very well, I thought. It can actually go over than what our estimate was. We had an estimate of just a little over seven hundred thousand dollars, so. Not very well, a little bit more money to actually spend on the bid alternates. So that the next part of discussion should be which of the bid alternates is the city wanting to afford. And that they all get a copy of that.
Yes, on their desk.
Summary that I sent. So on that summary sheet, it, it talks about the bid alternates and how that impacts the project. So the base bid is six hundred and sixty-three thousand and then the street lanes, uh, which were not part of that contract, but it's something that exceeded. Another hundred and six thousand or seven thousand dollars based on last week that we received. And then engineering for everything is a hundred and twenty-three thousand. Total base project is eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. You see, but I, I believe some room to add on. Budget to do these projects.
We can execute all of the bid alternates and still have about thirty thousand dollars left. For change orders and stuff like that, so.
Correct, and that includes around fifteen thousand for.
The bid alternates are the bump outs.
Hmm.
Crosswalks. Crosswalk patterns with the stamped concrete and the, the colored concrete and stuff like that. So, um, you know, we talked about this. If we're gonna do this, we might as well do it right. Um, this will impact, again, have a pretty good impact on Main Street. Application process, so it would be my recommendation to exercise all of the bid alternates. As listed on the, the bid sheet, um, and read forward and get this started. This, this allows Manass to, to, if we do this all at once, this allows Manass to go ahead and, and. Solicit their subcontractors for the concrete and stuff like that and keep this process moving. Um. At a later date, we can discuss expanding this a little bit, but for now, we have enough money budgeted and.
Contingencies.
Andre has set back fifteen thousand dollars for some contingencies. We have the extra thirty-three thousand, I think, left over. For any change orders that might, may pop up, so I think we're in really good shape.
So, um, if you decide to approve that, then the next step, obviously Perry will bring back. Hopefully a signed contract from Manass at the June third that you then will officially take action on to approve the contract, correct? You need, we need a motion for them to approve the project, the bid project going to Manass, right? Right, so if we could start with that.
It's a resolution.
Oh, it's in the resolution? Okay, okay, so we need to approve the resolution. Thank you, Andre.
I make that motion to approve thirty-two oh five.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Helsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
So does that include the total bid alternates in the resolution or we need a second? I didn't see that in the resolution.
It's listed, um, and then it says.
Yeah, why don't we just to be sure if you're all right with it, Jim, make a motion to include the bid alternates as part of the project. A motion would be great.
Make that motion.
Second.
Call them all.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Helsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Anything else?
Perry, is that all you need?
Good, all right, uh, public safety, Chief Adams is not with us. Officer Olson?
Go report, Your Honor.
Thank you. City administrator.
Thank you. Uh, one item on my report, I was asked to put this on the agenda for a discussion with the elected officials. Uh, to extend open burning. It's, um, expired on the fifteenth of May, I believe. You, the question comes before the elected officials, if they wanna approve extending it to June fifteenth. Would be additional thirty days and I'll open the discussion to the elected officials.
I just had a couple of, of the community reach out to me with all the rain that we've had this spring. Uh, a few of them have not gotten a chance to do their normal burning that they normally do. Uh, I just thought it'd be a good idea just to bring it to council and see what everybody thinks. Uh, even if it's for another month, I think that it's okay. Our proper chief would be here just to talk about, you know. There's no risk of burning anything, cause everything's really green right now, so.
I've also had a couple people ask about it, so.
So, and I've talked to the fire chief and he will abide by what the council votes on.
I think we approved this last year to, to extend it, so.
We did it fall, last fall, I think, so. If there's no question, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have no pro. I have no problem with it. I'll second your motion.
We could specify until June fifteenth?
Until June fifteenth.
Okay, thanks.
And to. For that.
Second, I'm happy with that.
All right, please call the roll.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Helsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
All right, number seven, consent agenda. Is there anything that we need to pull out and set separately? No, Your Honor? All right, if that'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Don't move.
Second.
Mormon?
Yes.
Helsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
All right, number eight ordinances. A, second reading, ordinance two three oh six, to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the finance officer language in the code of ordinances. Amending chapters eighteen, nineteen, five and seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Helsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Very good. A B, first reading, ordinance two three oh seven, to change the parking regulations in the code of ordinances, amending chapter sixty-nine. Section sixty-nine point oh eight, one sixteen, on the west and south side of South Jackson Street from southeast Lynn Street to Hancock Drive.
And the most second.
Second. Please call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Helsa Beck?
Yes.
And C, first reading, ordinance two three oh eight, to rezone property on South Marshall Street, changing the zoning from C one special commercial district. To C three limited commercial district.
So moved.
Very good. Please call the roll.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Helsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you. Number nine, mayor's comments. Mayor's not here tonight. Uh, number ten, council members' comments.
Just have one comment. Anything, a painting project, they've moved heavy equipment in to start earthwork, so that project should be gearing up this week, I would imagine. Yeah, right again.
Yeah.
Very good. Just, uh, two quick things. A week or so back, I can't remember the exact date, I attended the airport fly-in breakfast. It was fantastic. They had relic planes out there, World War Two relics, uh. Very highly attended, um, and then yesterday morning, the Boone Fire Department pancake breakfast was, uh. Was equally good and very well attended.
Very good.
So kudo to all those folks that were involved in those two events. Excuse me.
I forget. I also had a chance to go to the fly-in, um, it was, it was a lot of fun. All right, uh, and no other comments, um, number eleven, a closed session pursuant to Iowa Code twenty-one five I J. To discuss the purchase of a particular real estate where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price that the Boone would have to pay for that property. Make a motion to go on for the question.
Don't move.
Second. Please call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Helsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.